Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting of December 7. I would like to call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Under the agenda, I would like to move 13-8 and 13-9 to 18-3 and 18-4. Is there any other changes, additions? Could I have someone move the agenda please?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, my apologies. Items 5.3 and 7.3 can be removed from the agenda. Mr. Justman's request of the library presentation being deferred until January.
While in favor... Oh, sorry. That was moved by Counselor Forrest. Where's that?
We get prepared.
Getting your work ahead.
Sorry about that.
While in favor, Carrie. My name is Mayor Crystal McIntyre, and I will chair this public meeting tonight.
Paying attention to you.
Councils here to listen to the information presented and to make a decision on the matter that is the subject of this hearing. This is a formal hearing, and it is not a debate. Everyone wishing to speak who has pre-registered will be given an opportunity to speak once to the matter as called upon by myself as Chair. Each presenter must state his or her full name, address, and their interest in the matter, including whether they support or do not support. Individuals who do not identify themselves will not be given the opportunity to speak. Presenters are to stay within the five-minute time limit. I will call upon the designated staff, the CEO, to introduce the subject of the hearing. Council, you may ask questions or clarification relating to the subject of the hearing.
Madam Mayor, Administration is putting forward, has put forward a proposed bylaw for advertisements and public notification numbered as Bylaw 1016-20. What this will allow Council to do is use the website, social media, the newspaper, and other means to advertise its decisions, both statutory and otherwise. Administration is putting this forward because under the current situation, under the current legislation and the current bylaws, the newspapers are sole source of official advertising. If a decision comes in a week before, we are allowed to submit ads, or if the newspaper shuts down, as it does both at Christmas and the summertime, it cannot really delay the advertising the town has to do. What the administration has put forward with this advertisement or with this bylaw is that the advertisement begins once it's placed on the town's website. However, the newspaper will still be used as a source of advertising. However, rather than two weeks in a lot of cases, we would have at least one week advertising in the newspaper, and it would be the date that it hits the website would be the first official notice. Just as an example, right at the moment, we must advertise all development permits under the land use bylaw. If a development permit were to come in tomorrow, we would not be able to advertise that development permit until next Wednesday. It has to be advertised for a two-week period, which means that it would be two more weeks in the Friday subsequent that it would be able to be advertised. Under this bylaw, we would be able to take that development permit, advertise it immediately on the website, and have it two weeks later become valid. It would still be one week in the newspaper, but at least for the developer, that would speed up the process by five to 10 days.
Is there any questions of Council? Okay, thank you, CEO. Is there any applicants to speak to the... applicants to speak to the application? Any registered speakers?
Not quite aware of through email or phone.
Seeing none, I will call upon those that are against the presentation. Anyone opposed to this bylaw?
Administration has not received either by email or phone.
Okay, thank you. Then I will conclude that this public hearing is closed. So the next is a presentation by Green Space Alliance. Hopefully, this doesn't crash our Facebook.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me well?
Thank you.
So my name is Marcelo Figuera. I'm an associate senior planner with Green Space Alliance, and I'm here to speak in support of the bylaw. Whenever you're ready, I can start it. I have a presentation I'd like to share with my screen.
CEO, just a second, please.
Yes.
Bylaw is a little later in the agenda. What they would do is like a presentation prior to council's first reading to the line of assembly. So it's a resoning bylaw.
Okay, so this is just a presentation?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Would Administration give me permission to share my screen because I have this presentation? The Zoom meeting is saying that I cannot share my screen.
He's working on it.
There we go, thank you. It's working now, just a second. So good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors again. So my name is Marcelo Figuera. I'm a resident of the City of Edmonton and a senior planner associated with Green Space Alliance. I'm here tonight to talk in favor, in support, about this bylaw to resound those lots located on 103rd Street which are property owners of Alberta Social Housing Corporation. As you may recall, we visit the town in early the summer, and the initial application was to resound from low-density residential to high-density residential. But as per the latest deliberation that Council did and advised, we're here tonight to offer an option to go to the medium-density residential district instead of going to a direct-control zone. And the reason behind this is because we think there are opportunities in your land use bylaw to address the concerns that were raised at the last council meeting without having to go to the direct-control route. So, but I'd like to just give an outline of this presentation. So I have a few items that I would like to talk about it. So the first thing is the objectives of this project, like there are single-family housing that Alberta Social Housing Corporation own in high level. We were retained by the government to develop a plan for at least two options to show to the public. As of today, we have, I think, designed seven options already. The timelines for this project is to receive first reading tonight and then continue with the process and may have Council deliberating for approval in next year in March. We do provide a lot of urban design expertise on this project, so we use those, our previous experience expertise, to try to address all the concerns that were raised from the public and also based on the documents as your municipal development plan and your design guidelines. We had those sessions with the community. We also have sections with Council leading in August. But we really want to have a plan that everybody is happy with and they can add to the supply of housing in high level. So the reasons for choosing this site is, first of all, the resoning to the R2 district will increase the supply of housing, including no support handle browsing in high level. The medium density is one thing that is really appropriate for this site. You will provide a diverse set of housing options, and we're not undermining quality of the neighborhood. And we think this is very consistent with the statement of the R2 district. And medium-dense development is really something that can support the main street business because we know that big-boss developments usually have a lot of competition with the small shops. So I think this will help to keep the competition down and revitalize downtown. And for the future residents, it's really a site that is locally close to several amenities, which will benefit the families that may live in this development. In terms of the policy direction that the town has, your municipal development plan that was approved in 2010 really supports higher density on this site. So the question is, would that be an R3 or an R2? So the first time around, we developed like six options in terms of the R3. We understand our concerns with those options. So we were direct by Alberta Social Housing Corporation to scale back the development and use the same approach in terms of high-quality design and redesign and discuss with your administration what would be a good design based on the R2 district. But the core policies that we follow is that really the municipal development plan and the types of housing that the municipal development plan envision for this area, which are duplexes for plexing townhouses. So tonight, we will bring in those options for your consideration. So here's a map of your municipal development plan. The area in orange is what is called residential core. So this residential core is where most of the housing at the beginning of the town is located. There's a lot of single-family in this area, but there were also areas where already resoned to R2 and areas where mobile homes are allowed. So comparing that municipal development plan with your land use bylaw, you see that this residential core is a little bit smaller in terms of what is low-density now. So the municipal development plan really aligns with your land use bylaw and vice versa, except that there is still a lot of low-density housing located in this residential core. When you look at them side by side, the image to your left in orange shows your municipal development plan residential core, and the image to the right, the low-density residential district in the same area. But as you can see, those things in the future, like if all the policies are implemented, this would be a perfect site for increasing the density. So in that regard, we think this application complies with your municipal development plan. So there's also the Town of High Level Design Guidelines, and which says in the land use bylaw that developments with the R2 district shall be consistent with the Town of High Level Design Guidelines. And this is very important because the Design Guidelines is a document that can inform the design and mitigation measures in terms of things that raise concerns and cause impact to this round development. So here in the screen, you see like, from, those are things that we took from your, for the Town Design Guidelines in terms of parking, what is a good practice for parking, what is a bad practice for parking, same with landscaping, all the images in terms of the scale and form. So again, we really bring forward today concepts in terms of duplexes, townhouses, fourplexes, and with a design that can fit within the scale and character of the neighborhood and design according to your design guidelines. Other things that the Design Guidelines advise is that it's really, the details are important in terms of design of the front of the house, landscaping on the site, so that development can be aligned with its surrounding existing developments. So with that, I really want to talk a little bit about some of the comments and questions that were raised the last time that this application came forward. We went back to Alberta Social Housing Corporations for them to check the numbers in terms of what is the waiting list for this type of housing in high level. So they gave us this table, which is you see on the screen. They confirmed that from their end and perspective, there are 26 families in this waiting list today. But I think if we just look at the long term, those queues, they vary like with time. Sometimes there could be more or less people. But a project like this for housing, it's a long term. So we're planning for the future, not only for the queue today. So we're expecting that, of course, people that are in need for housing, they'll find ways to have their needs addressed. But Alberta Social Housing Corporation wants to decrease this waiting list as much as possible. So our project today is to at least tackle this waiting list in a way that we see a decrease in the future. Just a little bit more background on what we have done so far. So there were four sessions that we had in the summer, and then we also had a video conference call with Council, not all the councilors, but I think five councilors who were able to attend on August 31st. In between those sessions and today's council meeting, there were several meetings with administrations. So we kind of, we had to adjust the project several times, and that's why we designed a lot more options based on the direction from Alberta Social Housing Corporation and the feedback that we received from your administration, trying to narrow down the gap between what the government wants and what the expectations are from Council and from the public, and having really appreciation for the input from your administration because they are the ones that are dealing with this application on a daily basis. So they are in a better position to inform to us what is something that can be put forward and indeed. So with here, this, I kind of conclude my presentation. I'm open to respond to any questions. The second segment for this presentation, Yonish Deshpande, the principal of Green Space Alliance, will present the options that I introduced today. Thank you.
Is there any questions of Council? Yes.
So is he going to present the new option? The next gentleman will present the option.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yonish, you mute.
Sorry for that. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Yonish Deshpande. I'm principal with Green Space Alliance. I'm a resident of Edmonton. And as Marcelo explained, we are working on this project with Alberta Social Housing Corporation. And as Marcelo explained, I'm just going to take you through some of the concepts that we have developed to demonstrate how R2 zoning, you know, can be implemented on this site. Before I do that, I would like to just stress some of the things that we had heard through the overall consultation process with the community, with administration, and to some extent, you know, like from Council. One of the things that people wanted to see for this site is some sort of clarity in terms of like what exact nature of development can be built, you know, like on this site. So our intention is to like provide you that clarity, you know, like through these conceptual options. There was like a bit of, you know, like non-support, you know, like for higher-density developments, including apartment housing. So we clearly heard that, you know, like throughout the process. And then people also wanted to see some sort of like ground-oriented development or lower-height development, you know, like for this site. And when I say ground-oriented development, there was an acceptance that there will be housing for like more families. And if we are creating housing for the families, what we heard throughout consultation is that you design it in such a way that there is space available at the ground level for some sort of ground-level amenities, which can be front yards, backyards, and so forth. So there was a high value given to that sort of like urban form. So next slide, please, Marcelo. Marcelo? Can you just take it to the next slide, please?
Sorry, it's frozen. I don't know what's happening. Just a second.
Okay, so if it helps maybe, okay, all right. Okay. Thank you, Marcelo. So for your information, I'm just going to take you through like all the options, you know, like that we had created. The first option, you know, like kind of like shows how the site could be developed, how the site could be developed if all lots are developed individually. So as part of like your R2 zone, you can do like duplex housing, you can do like town housing. They're all like permitted uses. We went through, you know, like all the development regulations for the R2 zone, and our interpretation is that you can actually develop fourplexes on each lot. The beauty of this kind of like development is it can happen, the timeline can be varied, you know, like depending upon like market demand. So some lots can remain as like single-family homes, some lots can be developed as fourplexes over the period of time. But for Council's clarity, if you apply the R2 zone based on your development regulations, the maximum number of units you can get is still 20 units on this site, which is significantly lower than the R3 kind of like densities. And the positive point, you know, like about this development is it really fits well with the surrounding context with low-rise developments on all sides. So next slide, please. So this option, again, you know, like provides a slightly different version. If Alberta Social Housing Corporation decides to consolidate, you know, like multiple lots, then they can actually implement a different type of development. In this option, we are trying to demonstrate town housing, which is a permitted use under R2 zone. It can be developed as like four, kind of like fourplexes, but at the end of it, they can be like individual buildings at the center. They can be joined with each other to almost like create an eightplex. And all these housing forms are kind of like supported in your current R2 zoning. One of the things that we had heard, you know, like during consultation, that there were like some concerns about impacts of like vehicles on 103th Street. So in order to address that, you know, like we are open to like work with administration. So the development, you know, like can be accessed completely, you know, like from the rear alley or, I mean, if needed, you know, we can have like one or two accesses on the main street. But again, you know, like this development works if we don't provide any access, vehicular access on 102th Street. It can be completely serviced, you know, like from the rear alley, which works like really well. And it also provides like ground level, you know, like green spaces in the front yards and the back yards, and also the additional green space within the site. So this option kind of like shows 16 units. Again, the intention is to provide like clarity to Council and make sure that, you know, like a context-sensitive development can be built on this site. The third option, if you can go to the next slide, please, Marcelo.
It is.
Yeah, okay. So in this case, basically, what we have done is, again, slight variation. On the edges, like there will be like single-story or one-and-a-half-story, kind of like fourplex or fiveplex buildings because your R2 zone talks about the maximum number of like townhouses that can happen in a row is six. So we are still, you know, like within that regulation, and we are providing like fiveplexes on each side. And right in the center, there can be, you know, like townhomes back to back. You can have like 10 units. So overall, as again, worst-case scenario, maximum density would be 20. Based on your current regulations, you cannot get any units more than 20 on this site. So next slide, please. This option is again, you know, like another like option where the two lots on each side or at each end, they can be developed as duplexes, so that two units each. The central lot, you know, like can have like 10 units. So this can be developed as a stacked town housing, like units on top of each other. Or in another configuration, they can be back-to-back. But the whole point is, again, the maximum number of units you can get is only 14. So again, you know, like, I think what we are trying to do here is like to show you the worst-case scenario or like in-between scenario. And then in all these options, you know, like it addresses the principles established in your municipal development plan, in your land use bylaw, in your design guidelines to make sure that we are really trying to create something that fits with the neighborhood. Next slide, please. And this is the last scenario. If all the lots are kind of like developed as duplexes, so we have like five lots. On each lot, there would be a duplex. So in total, this scenario shows that there will be 10 units. And again, I must stress that, you know, like in a project like this, having this flexibility is like really important, you know, like for anyone who is going to develop this site as long as all the design principles are met and we achieve this win-win situation for the community and the property owner to address their intentions. So the worst-case scenario, you know, like is 20 units, and the kind of like best-case scenario is like 10 units. But in all these scenarios, you know, you can achieve all the principles established in your town policies. So next slide, please. So I guess we would really like to request Town Council to consider our revised application for first reading today. And we would like to stress that Alberta Social Housing Corporation and Green Space Alliance are committed in working with the town to develop a final solution that works for everyone. The consultation process has still, you know, like not finished. Our intention, you know, like is if we get the first reading today, to continue the consultation, there would be a public meeting scheduled in early January, and there would be still additional opportunities for people to provide their comments. And then when the public hearing is set at that time also, residents can come in front of Council to provide their input and concerns. So we are really looking forward to working with everyone to take this project forward. And with that, I would like to conclude my presentation. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Council, questions? Thank you very much for your presentation and have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you very much.
Bye. Okay, I'd like to call forward Staff Sergeant Deveron, who's been waiting patiently to give you this RCMP report.
Thank you very much for all the attention to your council meeting. I'll be there.
You can remove your mask to speak if you wish.
Thank you.
Yes, you can.
Hard enough to hear without, or understand without. Hello. Everybody has coffee of the the report. You can see I added the extra field, like I said I would, for comparative purposes for 2019 to 2020. You can see there's been a significant decrease from last, home calls for service from last month. But for some reason, we've been busy, a little bit of calls have been outside the town or high level. Well, I guess there's a number of assaults reported, one reported aggravated assault, charges delayed for, on four of those files, two unfounded, two resolved by complaint, but the victim wishing no action. Two victim letter files reported in November, one resulting in charges, the other had insufficient evidence to proceed. Three paragons complaints resulted in charges in one incident. Twelve liquor related incidents with no charges, off discretion refused. Twenty seven calls submitted to property obstruction, enjoyment property, which are all incurred using discretion. That took three mental health calls, one was unfounded. The other two, the files were dealt with by the hospital. Four reports of missing persons, all relocated. And thankfully, there were no sexual assault, related files in the month of November. Eleven nine one one calls, five number unfounded, two were actual calls for service. Three reports of stolen vehicle, which are still under investigation, they incurred towards the end of the month. Four reports of utter threats, two incurred by discretion and two were unfounded. Twenty allegations of failing to comply with judicial orders, which resulted in 18 charges and two were dealt with by way of discretion. And a number of other files included assistance to other agencies, accidents and general assistance to the public. The new Sergeant Ops MCO has been identified and it's Corporal Mike Burns, who is currently in the historical homicide unit in Whitehorse. He got to complete a northern medical, which he got it scheduled for December 18th. And he claims to be a seller in market in Whitehorse, so he should be here early in the new year. And just like to remind everybody, the new immediate roadside sanctions came into effect on December 1st. We issued five roadside expansions from Friday night to Saturday evening. And of course, Christmas is coming up. Everybody have a enjoyable Christmas with COVID. One thing that came to my attention, that totally slipped my mind, was the CRU reports, the Crime Reduction Unit reports. They've been a busy group of individuals, pardon me, individuals over the last couple of months. And for the next council meeting, I will present the most recent report, but I'll have the other reports for information. So you can catch up to speed what they've been up to. There's been actually a lot of activities on their unit and they've been just busy dealing with that.
Any questions for council? All right. Thank you for your report.
Thanks very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yep, see you later. Is Kelly on the line?
Hi, everyone, I am here.
Welcome to our council meeting.
Very much for having me. I will jump right into it if that works for you.
I just, I'll introduce you to the public because they can see you. Kelly is with the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers. And she's going to give a report on the state of the industry.
Perfect. So I do have my presentation on the screen. Hopefully you can see that. So I'll just give a quick update. I don't want to take too long, but I did want to provide an update to the community. Just with COVID going on, typically I try and get up there in the year. But of course, the circumstances are are a little bit different. So very quickly, CAP is the largest industry association in Canada. We have offices from coast to coast and we represent the producers. So 80% of oil and gas in Canada is presented by our membership. Sometimes more, sometimes less, depending on, you know, what our membership's doing and where the oil and gas is being produced. But for the most part, 80% is kind of our baseline number. And, you know, very quickly, what we were focusing on during COVID-19 in the early stages, so kind of that February, March forecasting as to what was going to happen with the pandemic in terms of industry. These were really the three pieces of of work that we were looking at. We were looking at essential services. So, you know, continuing to provide energy to the country and making sure that supply chains remain intact. And also making sure that our workers in industry can continue to work and provide that service. You know, COVID has been a situation where you don't really know what you don't know. At least that's how it was, very much so at the beginning. And we need to ensure that we were keeping hospitals and our emergency services well equipped from from an energy perspective. And then liquidity and job preservation. So, you know, the need for credit facilities being made available, making sure that companies and industries had access to capital. You know, a lot of industries in Canada have been looking at this as a key priority, the airline industry being one of them. So that's been a big part of it. And then also economic stimulus in various areas. But a big one at the beginning was economic stimulus in the areas of orphan and inactive wells. And this came at, you know, a tune of about $1.72 billion. And we've seen additional support from the Western provinces from that. So across Western Canada, from a job preservation perspective. And again, this is just one example, but we were able to provide about 10,000 jobs through that. And then, you know, we're always looking at regulatory efficiency. That's one of the biggest challenges we have in Canada from a competitiveness point of view. But this has been a good opportunity to look at some of those efficiencies and streamline regulations where it makes sense. So, you know, I've I've talked about a lot of this, but in terms of liquidity and job preservation, you know, we've been looking at big access to capital. And I do want to mention this because this continues to be a theme as we kind of continue throughout this throughout this crisis. But the the largest kind of announcements of these is the LEAF program. So big amounts of money, this is accessible to to companies with a threshold of about $300 million and over. And we haven't really seen producers, our big producers, take advantage of this capital the way that, you know, some people maybe thought they would. Whereas in the United States, we've seen companies take, you know, $100 billion worth of capital from Wall Street. So the point being is is that our companies are quite a bit more nimble than our southern counterparts, which leaves us in a in a good position from a competitiveness point of view. We're not seeing as many acquisitions, we're not seeing as much closure. What we experienced in 2015 prepared us very well for this storm, whether or not we wanted to see another storm or not. It is one silver lining of of what we saw in 2015. And then clean technology is really where the federal government especially is looking in terms of stimulus. So through various ministries, what we're seeing in terms of stimulus comes in methane regulations, methane innovation, you know, carbon innovation, carbon capture being a big one of those. So they're using this opportunity as a big push for clean tech. And industry is very much in that space and looking at areas of innovation and growth. So for the economic outlook, I really just wanted to include this to reiterate how important the industry is for the Canadian economy. And as we look to the road, Road for Recovery, these are good things to keep in mind. You know, the energy sector, the GDP is about 6.1% in Canada. And we are the largest single private investor in Canada. So a very significant contributor to the economy. Our capital expenditure was about $81 billion in 2014 and our estimate for this year was $34 billion. I think more realistically, I'm just gonna jump forward here, but more realistically, we're actually at about the 24 24 billion dollar mark. So you can see here, I really like this graph because it shows all the way back to 2000. And I mean, it's great too, because it really shows where we were at in 2014 in terms of a high peak of capital investment. But it is a very significant place that we are this year. So just going back, you know, I always like to present kind of what the the global energy mix and forecast is. This changes, we update this once a quarter. But this is the mix if we are to meet the Paris Climate Agreement targets by 2040. So, you know, a cup to keep in mind is that between 2018 and 2040, we're forecasted to see about a 400% increase in renewable use globally speaking. So this is, the green column represents 400%. And why this is important is because, you know, renewables are an extremely important part of the global energy mix, but they will not outpace natural gas and oil. And so the competitiveness argument and kind of building our our export economy in Alberta is still a very relevant conversation to have and a very important one, as well as we diversify away from coal in order to meet our climate commitments. And Alberta right now too, I should mention that only about 1% of our grid is is made up from renewable energy. So this is just a good, good kind of visual as to where we're at in terms of significance of COVID-19. So this shows, you know, multiple major global events throughout the last century. And, you know, this is the the largest relative decline in 70 years for energy demand and the biggest ever decline in absolute terms. So, you know, again, very significant. I think I've kind of covered this, so I'll just skip through to keep things on track. So this is our total wells drilled drilled in Western Canada and shows the forecast as well. So, you know, we are seeing actually an uptick of wells drilled in 2021, which is a good thing. We were estimated to see more, as I said, in 2020, but because of COVID-19, we saw this go down. So we are seeing a little bit of a positive upward trajectory and we are expecting to see demand go back to normal. We won't see recovery in 2021. There's still a lot of uncertainty around supply chain issues and also, you know, vaccinations and some of these kind of broader implications of the virus. But our our demand is set to recover by 2022 to 2024. So just to wrap up quickly, kind of our, you know, our priorities looking forward. So our priorities for the speech from the throne were these. We put forward priorities that really fell into the category of economic recovery. So, you know, creating and retaining good jobs in Canada, benefits for prosperity for indigenous communities, environmental leadership and building wealth and value while shrinking Canada's debt. So this year, we've seen about a 45%, or GDP to debt ratio in Canada is about 45%, which is extremely significant. And so we really need to focus on our export economies to narrow this gap. So projects like, you know, Trans Mountain and Keystone XL continue to be very important for the export market and getting our product to market. And one place that we're looking to right now is a blueprint for some of this incentive is Norway. So it's very challenging to provide a blueprint to our government from other countries because of our social and environmental regulations here in Canada, which are very important, I should say. But because we're the top of that category, it's very hard to compare us to other producing countries of a similar production size. Norway this year provided a lot of tax incentive and restructuring. And so we're now providing this as, as I said, as a blueprint to the federal government. And we've seen some movement on that in Newfoundland for the offshore. But one thing I wanted to mention is is that Norway is providing incentive for exploration. So in Canada, we're kind of just trying to keep wells online or competing for existing wells and, you know, existing product. Norway has figured out a solution for actually providing true stimulus and, you know, the exploration side of it. So that's a, that's a big piece of the the puzzle. And then again, quickly, we do do third party polling at CAP. We do this a couple of times a year. And I did just want to point out that, you know, for the first time actually that I've been at CAP, the environment has not made the top five priorities of Canadians. And this is very much because of economic concerns in the country. Healthcare, so we're looking at this right hand side here, but healthcare is always in the top five, usually the top three actually. But all of these other kind of top five priorities really fit into the economic recovery kind of point of view. So it's not to say that the environment isn't important, but I think people's priorities are starting to shift and jobs and job preservation continue to be extremely important for people. I think the other interesting thing to mention too is is that typically, this left hand side, the 61% number, I haven't seen it be over 60% or over 59% actually since I've been at CAP. And we are seeing supportive in the industry in the 60%. So that's a significant change as well. And again, it really comes back to some of these bigger questions about the economy. So just to wrap up, the the good news being there's, you know, three, four of our major pipeline projects. Actually, the one that's not on here is the Coastal Gaslink project. But four of our major pipeline projects are in construction. And this has been a great employer throughout this, throughout the past year. And it is somewhat ironic that we had so many challenges with these projects over the course of the past decade. But, you know, all of these projects are going ahead. I know that there's been a lot of questions around the US election in Keystone XL, but TC Energy is confident that the project will move forward. And they're working very hard to get as much construction done as possible before the inauguration in January. And oftentimes, some of these energy issues can be politicized during campaigns and and kind of peter out from, and, you know, from an office point of view when the time comes. And I think I I covered most of these. From a policy perspective, we are starting to look at the clean fuel standard. We've been monitoring this very closely. So I would encourage you, you know, to to look into that. I could do a whole presentation on the intricacies of that. But I think more information from the federal government will become available in the new year. And that's when CAP will really start to go out and engage with the public in a big way. And then in terms of forecasting gas pricing, I did want to just quickly mention gas pricing, gas pricing because it is a piece of good news. For the first time in three years, we saw gas pricing in Canada stay over $0, which is a very, you know, that, as I said, it hasn't happened in three years. This is a positive sign. And we're actually seeing very positive numbers moving into the new year. So, you know, hovering around $3, upwards, for $4. So gas pricing is very good right now. And also 70% of the wells in Canada right now that are online are are gas wells. So I did want to just paint that picture of it's kind of, you know, the growing side of the the business in Canada. And I will leave it there. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Kelly, how many, how many um wells are they drilling in Alberta right now?
Not very many, I think. Uh, so just to go back to this. To this, so in Alberta, this was the estimate. I think we're gonna be at about thirteen fifty for wells drilled throughout twenty twenty in Alberta. So we're not too far below what our estimate was, but we're not hitting hitting this number.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you very much, Kelly. Okay, um, moving on to the approval of the minutes from the November twenty-third meeting. Everybody's had a chance to look at them. Is there's no errors? We can?
Question. Um, there's one motion here in the minutes from the November thirtieth where it says carried like consensus. I just thought the difference is. Sorry, who signed it? So for resolution four twenty-seven twenty, it says carried like consensus. We typically don't use that in.
There was no motion, no one person made a motion, but everybody agreed on the the item. Where are you at?
Resolution four two two seven point two zero, page twenty-two. There wasn't a motion made, we didn't catch that, but there's no objections. So I mean, if we're wrong on our understanding or? Yeah, there's actually the minute they called the question, but we did not catch who made the motion. Was it carried?
Yes, it was.
Proceed to.
They're agreed.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to that. Thank you. All in favor? Carrie. November thirtieth, special counsel. Thirty years there? Could I have someone move then? Counselor Morgan. All in favor? Carrie. Delegation Business, our CMP report. Counselor Forrest moves for information. All in favor? Carrie. The um Canadian Association of Petroleum, to give a serious report.
Our evaluation.
Counselor Anderson moves for information. All in favor? Carrie. Uh, the next thing is my mayor's report.
You don't have to move the Greenspace Alliance presentation?
No, because there's another.
Well, there's a, there's a bylaw attached to that one. It has item number thirteen twenty. But don't we have to accept their presentation? All right, counsel can do that. Yes, that wasn't part of the.
Yeah, I know, but I assume because they have another request here in the bylaw.
I will defer to the presence of administration.
All right, so um, um, my report, I'd like to thank, first of all, counsel would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting and organizing the uh Santa Claus Parade and the fireworks. They were fantastic. Um, thanks to the A H Society also for hosting them in their reverse parade. There were so many vehicles there, you could barely get in. And then due to all the businesses and organizations that paid for the fireworks. Um, I've had people say they were the best fireworks they've ever seen. And it was nice to be able to sit on my deck and watch them and drink coffee. So thank you to everybody. So I sent out my mayor's report um ahead. If you have any questions, I will answer them in the uh because of time, I'm not gonna go through everything. I trust that you guys can read. I guess they weren't in the uh online, but any questions? If not, can I have someone move them, please? Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carrie. Deputy Mayor.
On November twenty-fifth, I attended the same ready meeting as the mayor of the A T A presentation um on November twenty-sixth, um, the second session of the Public Engagement Training to municipal fairs. On November twenty-seventh, the uh nail meeting, the Northern Alberta elected leaders um meeting, and then on November thirtieth, the budget meeting.
Did you have anything that you carried away from the nail meeting, other than Minister Allen's on the church report?
The new chair of uh A D C, I think, needs to get up to speed. I think he'd just been appointed. I'm not sure what kind of background information he had. Uh, he seemed to be focusing on the uh Portmanbury, Portmanbury Peace River Program per record or whatever. Anything in his comments?
All right. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Anderson.
November twenty-fifth, I attended the High Level Library Board Meeting. Uh, November twenty-eighth, I attended the Peace Library Systems Meeting. And on November thirtieth, I also attended the budget meeting.
Okay. Anything new in peace library world?
Not really. Um, they're having trouble spending their indigenous grants, but other than that, it seems to be pretty much business as usual. You know, COVID is is the issue, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor Jessamyn.
Uh, November thirty, budget, uh, attended budget session.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Morgan.
So November twenty-fourth, I attended a waste mission meeting. Uh, November twenty-fifth, I also attended the High Level Municipal Library Board Meeting. November twenty-sixth, I attended the same Mackenzie Frontier Tours meeting that you were at, that I was at home at. Uh, November thirtieth, I attended the budget meeting. Uh, December first, I also attended the RSSA negotiations. And December second, I attended my first uh C E C, C E C meeting, C C E C.
And you became the chair?
No, that was the C E C meeting. This was the C C E C meeting.
Can you give us the?
What the difference is?
Oh, I know what it is.
It's the, the C E C is the small group that uh does our region. And the C C E C is the bigger group that provides direction to Northern Lakes College for uh how, what programs and speakers we're looking for.
And anything?
Uh, we set aside fifteen thousand dollars for Chief Clarence Louie to provide um speaking, speaking role. And they've made available uh a suicide awareness and prevention course. That is an online course that is available, available to members of um mayor and council that I will forward on to everybody. And you sign up and it's an online course and the feedback on it is really good.
And you can attend at any time?
I believe so, yeah.
Oh, that'd be good. Okay. Any questions for? Counselor Forrest.
On November forty-fourth, I also attended the Mackenzie Waste Meeting. And November thirtieth, we all had budget meeting.
Yes. Uh, no key.
On November twenty-fourth, I attended a multiplex engagement session here at Town Hall during the day. On the twenty-fifth, I attended an A two A railway engagement uh meeting via Zoom. And on that note, uh, we had an informal meeting with the Chamber of Commerce uh regarding setting up a new business directory, um focusing on um what businesses have here to offer and what maybe they could think of offering uh with regards to A T A coming to the region. Uh, so just a little bit of a project for the chamber. And on November thirtieth, I attended the budget meeting here at town hall.
Thank you. Could I have someone move counsel?
Sorry, Mr. One. Mr. One plus.
Oh.
I stopped to be in the American. I have a good.
He can?
Yes, okay, sorry. Um, December first, um, also did the uh RSSA negotiating meeting with the county. On the second, the setting working group. And on the third, the third session for the online public, or public engagements.
Okay. Could I have someone move counsel reports, please? Counselor Welkley, all in favor? Carrie. Okay, actions from council meetings. Any questions? Could I have someone move them? Counselor Forrest, moves for information, all in favor? Carrie. The capital project sheet. Any questions about it? There, someone move that, please? Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Carrie. And the monthly report to counsel.
Madam Mayor, we'll appear to give the report in the interest of time. If you wish, we could just answer questions.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? I just have one. Um, with the increase of the mobile home availability, has there been any feedback on the? That would be planning and development.
Oh, sorry, Carrie.
Uh, yes, I've had a few phone calls and and some emails as well. Most are in favor. Uh, and then also for the rezonations as well, I've had a few uh emails today about um Donald Daphne from Landowners on those lots. And mostly in favor. I just had one actually seemingly while I'm sitting here with a few questions, I will respond to them. But for next week's meeting on Monday, um, I'm going to put together a presentation and then summarize all the public feedback that I've received via phone, uh, comments on social media and any emails and any emails I've received uh for counsel's consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of administration? Could I have someone move the monthly reports and? Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Carrie. Um, the twelve point one under old business uh is a uh under old business, a request to consider second and third reading.
Madam Mayor, administration's requesting counsel will provide seventh and third readings to the advertising public participation panel, which expands our ability to provide official votes.
Counsel, did you have any questions? Could I have someone move first reading then, please? Counselor Jess, our second reading, Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carrie. Could I have someone move third reading? Counselor Forrest, all in favor? Carrie. Thirteen one, the proposed bottle one oh one seven dash twenty.
Madam Mayor, I'll ask Ms. Gavin to give herself a check.
Sure.
Good evening, uh, mayor and counsel. Um, thanks to Greenspace Alliance for providing their presentation earlier this evening. Um, just a bit of background on the project um from the last RFD that came to council in October. Um, so a bylaw came forwards uh to rezone all the R one properties owned by Alberta uh Social Housing Corporation to R three. Uh, council received that bylaw amendment for uh information. And during the month of November, we had some discussion with the GSA regarding the rezoning application. Uh, and they approached us with the potential for R two. Um, we had a look at the design concepts that they went through with counsel tonight. And most of them are permitted uses in R two and besides the uh multiple unit dwellings. So the four plexes would be discretionary. Uh, for the uh maximum dwellings per site, it's limited to the available floor space or minimum uh floor area for each unit. Uh, so they provided a number of options for amalgamating the site or leaving the sites individually um along as as they are. We have uh supported a GSA through the project, um, through uh contacting stakeholders, adjacent landowners, and supporting the open house and the design shirt sessions. During one of the sessions, there was a consensus reached uh with the group that an R two zoning um would be acceptable. So tonight, we brought forward a bylaw one zero one seven dash twenty with a recommendation to rezone the five lots on Hundred and Third Street from R two, uh, sorry, from R one to R two. And to set a public hearing date for January the eleventh of twenty twenty-one.
So it's my understanding in our discretionary use of R two that there can be six plexes, is that right?
Well, a multiple unit dwelling of up to six.
Up to six, that's the maximum. Okay. So they could go up to six on each of those lots?
Yes.
They could build a six plex on each of those lots?
Yes, they'd have to meet um the, yeah, the footprint as well, the maximum lot coverage, but yes. I was, yes, I said that.
And and height restrictions?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions of?
Yes.
So I'm not sure if we're trying to lots go, but they either own lot one or lot nine. And maybe indicated that there may be some discussion to purchase either two or eight so that they would have seven in a row. So are they moving forward with that?
Not that I know of. That hasn't even, um, that discussion hasn't resurfaced. I know that it was uh um mentioned during the project, but as far as we know, they're not pursuing that.
So do we know from any adjoining landowners whether they're interested in having their lots resolved to maybe do something for their own?
Not that I know of.
No, we're just looking at these five lots and not the lot.
Exactly.
Can we make a request from them when they do their open house um to indicate what plans they have in place for the existing unit occupants? Like they have, they say there's seven, six hundred room, but there's more multi-bedroom rooms already there that they'll have to find alternative.
Okay. I don't know where they found the twenty-six because I'm on Coria Wells and then there's nine. So I guess they're will, will, will agree to disagree on that number.
What do they want to do with all the sold now?
Tearing them down and building.
They're not going to sell it or try and sell it or just tear it out?
I don't know.
And just to turn it to waste sometimes. It's always.
Yeah, that's government for it.
Totally against that. What's your idea?
There are their lots so they can do what they want.
Like a lovely hole. I can't see why they'd want to do that to all these things. They want to build, why don't they build somewhere else in town? Lots of lots in town. Right there on five good holes, they might surplus them.
We've been down that rabbit hole already.
That's ridiculous.
What's that?
They may surplus them, surplus the houses.
You mean like sell the houses?
Yeah.
Yeah, they may.
Yeah.
They haven't made an interaction when they demolish.
I don't know. It was all predicated on the house that burned down and Oriole Housing put in a request to have a multiple housing unit there and it morphed into what it is today. Any other questions? So, yes.
Oh, not a question where there's been.
Yeah, you can make a motion.
Make a motion that we go back to pass first reading.
Okay. So we're gonna vote on first reading, just to, an indication to the viewers, first reading is so that everybody can give their comments. There will be an open house, which we will set a date for, where people can come and give their, their, their feelings to council once again. Are we sending out letters again to all?
Any rezoning would have to be, most would have to be as all adjacent.
Once again, yeah. Okay. We'll ensure that they get them, can deliver them.
Can deliver them.
Oh, yeah, definitely. All right, all in favor of the motion? Oh, I guess we should reset the date. So what date?
So, but that's a date for the public hearing. What about their open house?
Yeah, so perhaps we can change that to the 25th and they can do their open house in, within the two or three weeks, first two or three weeks of January.
Well, the open house doesn't have to be on council day.
Well, they should go before the public hearing.
Yeah, they indicated early January, so we should give them maybe a couple of weeks and go for a public hearing, maybe the 25th.
Okay. Start your motion. Do you want to read that to Counselor Jessman? Just so he's clear.
Let council provide first reading to propose by law 1017-20 instead of public hearing date for January 25th, 2021, for regular council.
Okay, so that gives them time to have their. All in favor, carry. So 15.2, the RFD to appoint the returning officer for elections in October.
Madam Mayor, the changes in the World Authority's election act now require council to appoint a returning officer and a substitute returning officer. Administration is requesting that the municipal clerk be appointed as the returning officer. And through separate motion, that council appoint finance coordinator and the support services clerk as the substitute returning officers.
Do they accept that offer?
Yes. We can operate, approach them on that.
All right, any discussion, counsel?
Only alternative one.
Okay. Deputy Mayor moves alternative one. Which is appointing the municipal clerk.
There's also the option, Madam Mayor, leaving the chief administration officer as the secretary. That's the default for the AMT.
I read that.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Should neither of you be able to fulfill your duties, he will.
We actually required two motions, Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah. And so this second motion. Oh, sorry. All in favor of both, I do mean, carry. And the second motion. Deputy Mayor make first. Counselor Morgan make the second. You're welcome. All in favor, carry. So the, the next one is the grant, grant, grant funding application to FCM.
Madam Mayor, I'll ask Ms. Devon to forward.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. A bit of background on this request. In 2017, the town committed to a three-year contract with an asset management software and service with Asset Finder, who's now known as Univeris. And this choice to go with Asset Finder was based on a compatibility with existing town software, including our GIS system, which turned out to be inaccurate. So we were with Geo Media and Asset Finder was supposed to be compatible. They, in the end, after the agreement was signed, we were not. And the foundation of our current asset management system is founded on an inaccurate TCA, which is the tangible capital assets. So Keith and I have been working for, for the past year now with Asset Finder to try and get their platform to work for the goals that we have. And we've come to the conclusion that they're just not the platform for us. So we found an alternative option. And we have a number of goals, so in the asset management policy that the town has, there's a commitment to develop an asset management plan, and we don't currently have one at the moment. And we feel that there's an additional step that needs to be taken, which is a strategy. So this strategy, the outcome of it, would essentially outline a roadmap for administration to follow to achieve all of our goals, including an asset management plan, building a good foundation for our cap drawings, GIS shapefiles, and the TCA. So while the TCA is complete, it has inaccurate information. And without prioritizing that and working towards improving that information, our long-term forecasting for replacing assets, developing end-of-life forecasting as well will never be as accurate as it could be. So what we've done is in October, there was some funding that was approved under the 2020 operating budget in Keith's department to work on asset management. So we entered into, to a project with PSD, which is the Public Sector Digest, for developing an asset management strategy. And then the ultimate goal of that project is to submit a grant application to FCM for asset management in 2021. Now, they have an in-house grant writer who typically heavily assists municipalities with putting these applications together, applying for the most available funds, the maximum amount that we could get for 2021, to achieve as many goals as we can. So we're looking with our strategy that we're going to come out with a two-to-three-year plan of how we're going to achieve our goals and get the town to where it should be with asset management. Without the strategy, we thought we can't get there. But it will require additional funds above the $20,000 that we've put in for the 2021 capital budget. So we're looking to apply for the maximum amount. We put in $50,000 for the grant. We're not entirely sure how much it would be. They will cover asset management-related activities for the asset management plan, up to 50% of software costs, and then also doing the condition assessment. So right now, the asset information we have, while we have all of our assets coded in our TCA or in our asset management software, the information isn't useful because the feature data is blank. So we have a number of, for example, fire hydrants, that's what we have, and they're all numbered. But we don't have the condition, age, end-of-life forecast, that type of thing that would help us with forecasting, you know, 20, 30 years into the future. So we're asking today for council's approval to submit a funding application to FCM in January to get our asset management system to where it needs to be.
And will it be compatible with our system?
Yes. So for GIS, we've moved now, we're not with Geo Media anymore. We're with our GIS Pro, which is an Esri software, which is used most widely in many organizations. And they have, the system is, is online, like it's a web-based product. And they have a plugin direct to our system so we can manage our own data. And then we're also currently working with WSP to update all of our cap drawings for spatial accuracy. And then out of this strategy, we're also working on the capacity that we have internally. So perhaps myself and some of the others in, in the town office would be able to add to the feature data, you know, whether it's going out and getting condition or age, the things were purchased or installed, that sort of thing. So we can do some in-house to do, to save some costs, but our software is now compatible.
So what happened to all that data that was being gathered on capital assets?
We still have it. It's just, when it was initially put in, I believe it was a best guess for a year of installation. And then condition assessments haven't been completed on the lot, especially for the underground utilities. So, yes.
Was there any government reimbursements from the previous company we went with due to the unexpected incompatibility, it seems like?
I honestly don't know. I mean, I wasn't here at the time, Clark wasn't either, but that is the version I've been told, was that there was a supposed compatibility. Whether, we don't have that in writing from the company, so whether that was implied, assumed, I don't know, if I'm honest. So what we have right now is a system that is underutilized because of the inaccuracies in the software, in the data set rather. So we're trying to fix this and get the town into a better position, but we believe we can't do it with the current software and the support that they provide isn't good enough.
Sorry, just to follow up, and the financial impact. We budgeted $20,000 already, but there will be, it will, the cost will be significantly higher than that, even with a grant, or it depends on what they grant?
Exactly. So we're hoping to get most of the costs through the grant. And then we budgeted $20,000 to make up what our contribution would be towards the grant. So we're hoping that that would be the financial impact for the project and not above.
Any other questions?
The province doesn't have any grant funding for this?
FCM's the, the way to go. That's the, they, they had quite a big program last year and they maxed out of their funds. So they closed it in September for a few months and then it reopens in January with a new injection of funds. And this is where most municipalities are getting a money from, is from the FCM.
Because municipal affairs didn't really map this out very well when they introduced the annual Capitol asset 26 or 28 years ago. So I'm wondering whether the province was looking to assist in correcting that.
There's been quite a lot of changes in what's available as well and expectations. So a lot of municipalities went out and did the plan and invested in the software, which I guess to a certain degree, we did that too. And now they're on the back end, they're now doing strategies. So we've kind of taken a pause. We tried to figure this out with Asset Finder for almost 12 months and never really got anywhere. We can't pull the plug on them completely right now because we still need to utilize the software for year-end reporting, just for financials. So there will be an overlap in the software. So we've just budgeted for a one-year agreement with Asset Finder to get us through with the goal of getting the grant funding and then doing the switch later in 2021 to a better platform.
All the information will migrate across, or all the information we have will migrate across?
Well, we're going to improve it before that. So I've sent all of our files that we currently have to PSD and they're reviewing them. And then when we get all the new files from WSP that Keith is currently working on, we'll send those in. And then we're going to improve the information before it's dumped into the software for use.
Any other questions? Now, if someone make a motion, please. Okay. Deputy Mayor moves that a council approves the grant funding application submission. All in favor, carry. 15-4, the RFD to review, review of chamber. Or sorry, curling club lease.
Madam Mayor, I'll ask for you all to come forward to address the next question.
Deputy Bishop from council. So I have reviewed the curling club lease. I've managed that, worried down on complications and gone through some changes. One of the things that we'd like to change is the term of lease to be extended to two years, just in proficiency sake. A lot of these agreements, we're looking at extending. There is already, since the agreement causes for withdrawal from the lease in force majeure, so there's really no reason why we couldn't extend them for longer and just request a copy insurance each year. One of the other changes is the third-party advertising. So the curling club has been advertising for quite a long time. It's actually technically a sublet, so it should be included in the lease because they're subletting that area for a profit. So we just included that in there. Another thing is snow removal at these exits. So appreciating that the curling club is, is a volunteer board and they're coming there to check ice and to get things ready. They're not necessarily always there when it's snowing. So we thought it would be a little more practical for the town staff when they're doing the entire building to make sure those entrances and exits were, had snow removed from, if the curling club's there, of course they'll do them. And it still remains their responsibility in the lease, which is the addition that we would actually cover the snow removal. Other than that, those are basically the changes. But the curling club board did want to bring to council's attention, they didn't need their budget for this year. And it's pretty tough even them getting up and operating. And the teams they have and their advertising and that kind of thing, they would be looking at possible revenue of close to about $12,000. Their expenses with paying the, the lease and the utilities would be around $16,000, so they're expecting a shortfall. Generally, they have a bond spiel in March. They'd be very happy to have a bond spiel in March, I'm not sure if that's going to happen. So my advice was that we just continue the lease as is and we'll see what happens at that time. I did allow in the current budget, I took less, showed less revenue in our leases, partly being the kitchen lease and this lease, so I think we should, we should be okay. And when we come back with our final budget, if there's any changes that need to be made, can bring them to council at that time.
Counsel, any question?
Yes. So because you're hoping to sort of extend this, in 19G, I would just suggest rather than having the Capitol improvements by March 31st, 2021, projects to be completed in 2022, that have them in by March 31st of any given year for inclusion, potentially for the fall.
Thank you. Any other questions? Make a motion, please. Counselor Jess.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Then council approve the two-year lease?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me?
Those are.
Yes, I can just choose about that.
Okay, all in favor, carry. Chamber of Commerce lease. So also, that's the chamber, I went to other board.
I went to one of the board meetings and asked to have the opportunity to review. They have two MOUs and a lease. So the first one that we talked about is the museum space that they rent. One of the changes we'd like to look at is, it's actually set up for an MOU. I think it technically should be a lease, so I've switched that over. We had talked about possibly increasing it. They didn't feel that they had the capacity to pay increased costs. One of the reasons I'd ask for that is that they rent there all year round. And at one point, it's relatively seasonal now, so that means that we have to, like, keep the heat up, go up, go over, shovel, that kind of thing. So there is an increased cost to the town. I'd like to calculate those costs in more detail and come back to council for the next renewal, but just to know what that says for now.
So are they using the building year-round? Because when the town first made the decision to close the museum for the winter, I thought they were just keeping minimal heat on so that they could access their files, but they weren't actually leaving there, so there was no water, so they're servicing apartments, actually.
Yeah, they have been going there year-round too. And also, our museum leader has been going there as well, too, using the offices, especially with COVID. It keeps her separated, so.
So what are the costs to just keep the museum open? Because I thought that was part of the rationale, is that we were saving all of those utility costs and staffing costs.
Well, I have to actually see what the utility costs are at this point. I have them from, like, this, up until this point, so to see if there's much change. So we still have the heat at a fairly minimal. So I don't think there's a lot of usage, but I'd have to actually see what it is in dollars and cents.
Sorry, I'm not trying to sidetrack you, just.
No, that's a fair question.
Heat, the power, moving on, I might as well move. Sorry. Didn't need to sidetrack.
No.
Should I go on, or?
Well, I'm just thinking here. So the Chamber uses that all year.
The office upstairs, yes.
And they have, host their meetings there?
Not necessarily. They have, we're here, so.
Yeah, well, they have their meetings. The last time I went to was at the hotel. They have an arrangement there, so. Yeah, I mean, the last time that presented, I was under, like, the understanding that they were only using that office space, and yet they didn't meet a whole lot of utilities or anything.
We have to have a little bit of heat on.
Yeah. On in your stand-up, but. And shovel, but not to the point that we need to keep the museum open all year.
Well, that's why I asked what level is being serviced. If, you know, it's at, you know, plus 50 to keep things from freezing is different than having a 68 for the rains and the water service first down.
Right.
That's the question.
Okay, go ahead.
The next was the memorandum of understanding for the trade show. So of course, we didn't have a trade show for the last, I think, about the last two summers. No. So I guess I was looking at that MOU, basically, I think it should just be incorporated with our facility bookings, for whatever does come up. And we come back to council with the current revised policies that accounts for that. It's about over $7,000 of revenue that we're giving away, and we're not accounting that in our grants and other areas. So it could just be part of our bookings and permits. There's nothing really on the MOU that would be in regular permit for that length of time. So, but let's come back to account, like, we just resent that memorandum of understanding altogether. And if there does a trade show that comes up, that we have that accounted for.
Yeah, I guess the MOU was probably for the date, right?
Right, but it's just like one that you book, like anything else, in regular booking, and have everything down there, so which you need, the staff, the time, the non-tenant, that kind of thing. And if they need a grant, then they should come and apply for grant. As opposed to a separate MOU just for that one. And we don't really, right now, it's not actually counted within our budget anywhere. So actually, so to show that that money is going out every year, or in lieu. It still has a cost.
Yeah.
Council, do you agree with that? Just put, treat it as a booking?
Yep.
No more saving dates? Okay.
When you come to, if you come to administration, one day, one that they're going to help, see if the dates are available, just like anybody else.
I know, thank you.
In terms of saving dates, we will be, you know, if they came right now and said, yeah, we want to have one this March, we would be saving.
Yeah.
Okay, next.
So the farmers' market. So currently, we have an MOU with a farmers' market, and the Chamber of Commerce is our sponsor. So farmers' market can operate, incorporate society, can operate with a sponsor. The sponsor, there are several different types of sponsors. Could be the Chamber, could be the municipality. Some suggested that they just deal directly with us, and we be their sponsor, and we work with them. So we would still, we'd still get a market manager, and they still have their committee, and we would help to develop them further. I think was looking at having our special mentorship seasonal, that that's another one of those types of things that they can help look on with them, and we'll develop that.
Questions about that? And the farmers' market is fine with the change of?
Yes, I have had the farmers' market as well, too, in the season. It's, the Chamber's really busy because everything they're doing, and it's like the extra party in there, so this way you can just deal directly with them. And the Chamber was okay one way or the other, so. They have lots happening, and they're volunteer, too, so if it was one less thing that they were looking after. They just want to make sure it happens. Yeah, that's what I mean.
So since there's no questions, could I have a motion?
All with recognition.
Counselor Morgan, this is recommendation one.
I want you to read it.
All in favor? Carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
13-6, the remuneration.
Madam Mayor, council.
All these years, I thought it was remuneration.
It tends to get used interchangeably. Administration is coming forward as part of the budget process to request council consider remunerating their volunteers on council committees at a rate of $25 an hour. One of the reasons that we're coming up, or coming forward is that two, no, three of these committees, which include the subdivision development appeal board, the assessment review board, the planning commission, require quite a bit of training and certification in order for them, for a public member to even take part in that, or a councillor for that reason, for that matter. It's become a little onerous for some people to do that. In the past, we've had some really great volunteers who have quite willingly done that for us. But we're noticing, we are getting more interest in those things from the public, and having to travel, having to take that time is a bit of a burden on some of those individuals. So there are. Four, five committees that would be, could be considered as part of that, sorry, six committees. The airport beautification enhancement task force, the assessment review board, the banner of remembrance committee, the intermunicipal planning committee, the intermunicipal subdivision development board, and the subdivision development appeal board, are the council-appointed committees.
So this doesn't have to follow the full bylaw, the remuneration of council, council committees?
No, our volunteers are remunerated under a policy, policy 230.
This doesn't extend to the library board?
The library board is a separate entity.
Discussion, council?
I think it's completely appropriate to assess when people are training alone, it's four days. None of it's local. It's a huge commitment to have someone to, to volunteer six days of their time with travel.
Do we have public members on our assessment review?
You have to.
Well, carry. Oh, I'm asking if we have.
Yeah, Mr. Joe.
Oh, I received more. Oh, you do? I agree, like, they should be. I mean, there's a big difference though between the banner and the assessment because there isn't really any travel or anything for the banner.
Yeah, the planning-related ones, the IMPCs, the SDVs, that type of stuff, do require a higher level qualification, er, than the task forces. I'm sorry, the higher level of commitment on the part of the members because there's that educational commitment.
Yeah, I can, they have three, three-minute meetings.
Yeah.
I'm just efficient.
All right, you do not have a public member on that board, but.
Yeah, we have a public member for a long time.
Yeah, I agree with it, council. If we have the money in the budget.
We have placed the budget.
Yep.
Can I have a motion, then?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Welke, so turn to one. All in favor? Carry. 13-7, library board appointment.
Madam Mayor, administration is bringing forward a request from the library board to appoint Karen Bergold to the library board. This is consistent with section 401 of the Library Board Act, which allows councils to appoint those members.
Can I have a motion, please, council? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. So that concludes our public portion of our meeting. Could I have a correspondence for information?
All with 50, 150 for our information.
All in favor? Now we conclude our public portion, and continue moving cameras. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carry. Okay, so 18-1, resolution by Counselor Anderson?
That is to.
A category meeting.
Yeah, to honor the voice we're just hearing as we need the administration.
All in favor of that motion? Carry. The regional stewardship chair in agreement, that's just information.
Do you want to accept that as information?
Yeah. Counselor Morgan? All in. Carry. And the wage grid and organizational, just the wage grid?
That's wage grid and organizational structure as presented, or as amended.
As amended.
As amended. And that will be probably on.
Counselor Forrest? All in favor? Carry. And finally, the 2021 operating and capital budget.
So Madam Mayor, that will also be communicated, this is the interim budget, because you all have your final assessment values. This will be communicated to the public, and Ms. Phillips has put together a number of charts that explain the budget price, since they.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. I have a motion to amend the term, the term, please. Counselor Morgan, all in favor? All in favor? Carry.